Tina, it's six.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the December 8th, 2025 Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to order. Can we please, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Betts?
Here.
Mr. Carrier, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Hale, Vice President Teeter.
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Here.
President Cottone?
Here. Council has copies of the December 10th, 2025 Regular and Special Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, these minutes stand approved. We will go into Commission and Board Reports. Board of Zoning Appeals, grade Bets.
The next meeting is the 18th of December, 6:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Thank you. Destination Hilliard, Cynthia Vermillion.
This Thursday is the Holly Hop, um, shop, sip, shop and stroll. And it's here in downtown Hilliard from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you. Environmental Sustainability Commission, Cynthia?
We meet this Wednesday at 5:45.
Okay, Keep Hilliard Beautiful, Greg Betts?
Uh, the committee met on the 3rd of December to map out the, uh, the days and places where we'll be doing our cleanup, uh, volunteer cleanup events. And those will be coming out in the next couple of months. There will be no cleanup events during the, uh, the winter. Um, and I just want to thank, uh, all the volunteers who have helped over, uh, 2025 and those, uh, who will help in 2026 to Keep Hilliard Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Morpsy, Mr. Rowley?
Just a meeting later this week on Thursday.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning, Emily Cole?
We meet this Thursday at 6:00. If you'd like a little planning and zoning before you sip and stroll at the Holly Hop.
Thank you. Public Arts Commission, that's me. We, um, canceled our meeting for this month, so we'll meet again in January, the first week of January, I believe it is. Um, Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, Peggy Hale?
Um, we did not meet this month, but last month we had over 5,000 members, um, looking good. And we renamed the old community center to the Parks Administrative Building to decrease confusion when people are looking for the rec.
What's her name?
The Parks Administrative Building.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Aging and Place Committee, that is also me. Uh, we are having our, um, Christmas luncheon tomorrow at 11:30 at, um, Center Street Market. Okay, so now, um, we have recognition and special guests. Today is the last meeting for two of our council members. Councilmember Les Carrier and Councilmember Peggy Hale. We would like to thank them for their service to our community. And we have a few presentations, proclamations. There may be dancing and cake. I maybe have made that up. I'm, uh, who knows? Peggy. Service, whereas service to one's community as an elected official represents a significant investment of time, dedication, and a deep personal commitment to the betterment of our city. And whereas representing the diverse needs, interests, and perspectives of residents is essential to the success of Hilliard's council manager form of government. Since 2022, Ms. Peggy Hale has given generously of her time and faithfully served the residents of Hilliard as an elected member of Hilliard City Council. And whereas public service requires sacrifice and steadfast support from family. And we gratefully acknowledge the encouragement provided by Ms. Hale's husband Matt, who's here with us tonight, and children throughout her time in office. Now, therefore, the members of Hilliard City Council do hereby present this proclamation to Ms. Peggy Hale in appreciation of her dedicated service to the Hilliard community and extend our best wishes for success and happiness in all her future endeavors. And before we go. Then we have Mr. Les Carrier. Les, whereas service to, service to one's community as an elected official is a significant investment of time and reflects a personal passion for our city. And whereas representing the diverse needs, desires, and opinions of our residents is key to the success of Hilliard's city manager form of government. Whereas we honor and recognize those who generously give their time and talents in pursuit of the ongoing improvement of our community. And whereas since 2014, Mr. Carrier has served the residents of Hilliard as an elected member of Hilliard City Council. And whereas public service requires great dedication and sacrifice. And we gratefully acknowledge the unwavering support of Mr. Carrier's wife Heather and their children throughout his years of service to the community. Now, therefore, the members of Hilliard City Council do hereby present this proclamation of recognition to Mr. Les Carrier in appreciation of his service to the Hilliard community and extend our best wishes for continued success and happiness in all his future endeavors. Now we have the official presentation. Now we're going on a little field trip down.
All right, well, I was gonna say that, that, that's at the end, but I can say it now. So, uh, thank you so much, truly. Serving on Hilliard City Council for the last four years has been one of the greatest honors of my life. I'm deeply grateful to the residents of Hilliard who trusted me with this responsibility, challenged me to listen carefully, and reminded me why local government matters so much. To my fellow council members, Intern City Manager, and all the staff, and Thad for sitting next to me for four years. Well, a couple of years. Thank you for your partnership, uh, your professionalism, and your commitment to doing right, even when it wasn't easy. I learned quickly that progress doesn't come from one voice, but from a collaboration, respect, and a willingness to keep showing up. I'm thankful for the conversations, the debates, the late nights, the long walks with some of you, the coffees, um, the book chats, and the shared goal of making Hilliard a community we're proud to call home. To my family and friends, thank you for your patience and your constant support. Public service asks a lot, and I could never have done this without you cheering me on, reminding me to rest when needed, and believing in the work even on the hard days. I also want to say how proud I am to have been part of the journey of the well, helping start it, seeing it grow, and finishing strong. The well represents what I love most about Hilliard, people coming together with compassion, creativity, and a shared commitment to serve others. Being part of something that will continue to impact lives long after my term ends is incredibly meaningful to me. As I close this chapter, I do so with gratitude and hope. Gratitude for the opportunity to serve and hope for what's ahead for Hilliard. Our city's best days are still in front of us because of the people who care deeply and step up to make a difference, including all of you. Thank you for allowing me to serve, and it's a privilege I will always carry with me. You guys are the best.
Last, last year, anything you want to say? Okay. All right, Ms. Cole?
I asked if I could say something very briefly about each of you. Um, so Peggy, I first met Peggy soon after I was elected with strong advice from outgoing Councilman Pete Marsh that if we gave each other a chance, he thought we'd really hit it off. It's the best advice I received. Peggy, you are leaving the tiniest big shoes for incoming council members to fill. You have served with courage, grace, and integrity, always leading with honesty and a willingness to do the hard work to move Hilliard forward. In every major decision before us, you have always asked, is this what's best for Hilliard? Always centering Hilliard first in your decision-making. It has been an honor to serve with you, and I'll miss sitting up here with you, my friend. Thank you for your service to Hilliard. We're better for you being here. And then Les, I wrote something for you, too. Our longest-serving current county, city council member, Councilman Les Carrier, has served Hilliard for 12 years, shepherding Hilliard through a time of great transition, through growth, a transition to the city manager form of government, and culminating in the opening of the well this year. Les, you have served Hilliard with passion and a zeal for asking tough questions, challenging the status quo, and demanding we always strive to be better and do better for our constituents. Thank you for your legacy of service and the many years you've given to ensure residents have representation that will fight for them. May your fighting spirit live on among future councils for years to come. Thank you.
All right, you good? Everybody good? All right, then, um, we're moving on to business. Are there any changes to the agenda? Dee?
Today I had, um, was looking over the packet, and 25R100 was not in the original packet that was sent out and posted. I did, um, redo it and send it out, but I think probably for proper procedures, I should probably amend the agenda to add it. So I'd request, um, to add 25R100, uh, Resolution 25R100, authorizing the city manager to purchase fleet vehicles and equipment from Henderson Products, Inc., and fight a freight liner, Columbus, Inc., through the state cooperative purchasing program. And I apologize for the glitch.
That's okay. Do we need to vote on that?
You do.
All right. Um, do we need a motion in a second?
Correct.
Please.
No moved.
All right, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter? Thank you. The agenda's been amended.
Thank you. We have two items on the consent agenda. 25R93, reappointing two members to the city's Board of Tax Review. And 25R94, accepting the dedication of roads and easements for public and private utilities, cable television, service connections, and stormwater drainage for Section 1 of the Hill Farm 2 East Development. Would anyone like to move either item to the regular agenda for discussion? Okay, then I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda by voice vote. Second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. These, um, items are approved. Now we are in the public comment portion of the meeting. Has anyone signed up to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. We have two people signed up. Uh, the first one on the list is Paul Lambert.
Mr. Lambert? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. What he said?
I'm, uh, Paul Lambert, 4697 Prestige Lane here in Hilliard. I rise to thank my good friend, Mr. Carrier, for his years of service as a member of the city council. Mr. Carrier and I entered public service and at about the same time, um, he serving on council and I serving on the school board. In those days, the relations between our local governments was adversarial, more often than it was friendly. Um, but we changed that. Um, we were able to build a team together, um, which included Mr. Carrier, Mr. Teeter, um, the late Chuck Buck and Larry Urmann, um, and other folks that helped us put together a team that spanned the governments and brought this government, brought this community together as more or less one government that, um, each, each with its role, but working together for the benefit of the community. We changed fundamentally the way this city is governed. First, it was issue nine that, um, added the requirement that, uh, actually restricted TIFs on residential property and was later amended in the city charter. Um, and what I think was a very powerful way that required that the Norwich Township be brought to the table whenever there's a residential TIF. Um, for a long time, forever, the township was left out of those, uh, decisions. And then the big one, issue 33, I forget the year. You guys remember which year that was, but, uh, issue 33 changed the form of government from a mayor council government to a city manager council government. And I think our community is much better for that. So I don't have anything to really to elaborate. There's been some beautiful speeches made, um, already tonight. Um, we're gonna miss you, my friend. You were the driving force behind, um, many of these things. I know you're not finished. Um, I still see your voice out there on, on many topics. And, um, we'll agree on a lot of things and we'll argue about a few. Um, but that's what makes, uh, that was what makes a democratic government go around. So, um, that's all I'm here for, is to say thanks, Les. Um, I hope we get to do a lot more thanks together, buddy.
We have one more signed up. It's Kathy Becker.
Hi Kathy. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Sure, it's Kathy Becker, 5693 Aristocrat Drive in Hilliard. Um, so I'm here again, um, regarding the fuel cell. Um, and I'm here today at the request of several people who live in the neighborhood near where the fuel cell's going to go in. They couldn't be here and asked me to speak in their place. Um, so as you know, it will emit 1.5 million pounds of carbon dioxide every day at the ground level, directly next to a major subdivision, a school, and in a park. Um, and on the other side of 270 is Columbus Humane, another subdivision, Millrun Shopping Center. And 1.5 miles away is Quarry Trails Metro Park. It's the largest fuel cell in North America, second only to one in Korea. So nobody's ever lived next to a structure like this, and we really have no idea what it will do. So residents have a lot of questions, such as, um, will the carbon dioxide that's emitted simply dissipate? Or will the CO2 warm the air in the vicinity to unprecedented levels? And what are the health effects of chronic exposure to heightened levels of carbon dioxide? And what are the climate effects of putting this much carbon dioxide in the atmosphere during a climate crisis? So the question that residents of, of the area asked me to put to you today is, and you may talk about this later, um, is can the city either hire a scientist or demand the Ohio EPA do a dispersion and inversion study of the area before the fuel cell is built? So in talking to safety experts, um, one possible scenario is that the CO2, which is a greenhouse gas, could warm up and cause warming that causes an inversion. So it sort of makes a dome that then prevents other CO2 that's, you know, coming out in following days from dispersing. And then that CO2 could warm up, and it could just make a really hot area right around in the whole vicinity of the fuel cell. But we don't really know, you know, what's gonna happen. We don't know that that scenario would play out, and so that's why a study is needed. Um, and this seems like, you know, a study seems like a very reasonable step to take. I know a lot of the residents, having talked to them, they sort of feel like this is a big experiment going on, and they are the test subjects, you know, unwillingly and not with their consent. Um, but because they live there, they're being forced into that position. So the residents would like to get your thoughts on about a dispersion and inversion study for the fuel cell. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any other people signed up to speak or that have not signed up that want to speak?
I have no one signed, uh, signed up, ma'am.
All right, then, we will move on to the business of council. Um, tonight we have no ordinances, neither no second reading, no first reading. We have resolutions. So Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R95 by title only?
Appointing blank to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Dee. Um, will someone move in second to amend this resolution to add in the names for who we are putting in the position?
I'll, I'll make a motion to add the name Pete Marsh, to, so that it reads in whole, appointing Pete Marsh to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Resolution is amended.
Thank you. Resolution 25R95 is passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable, allowable by law.
President Cottone? President Cottone?
Okay, wait, I went too fast. Okay, um, so we voted to amend the resolution.
Correct.
All right, thank you very much. Um, can I get a, um?
I have to read it. As amended.
Thank you. Dee, will you please read the amended Resolution 25R95 by title only?
It's the amended version, appointing Pete Marsh to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. Now we need a motion in a second.
Thank you. Can we get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Resolution 25R95 is in effect and is in, has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R96 by title only?
Appointing mem, appointing members to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. And again, we need someone to motion in second to amend this resolution to add the names, um, that we chose for this appoint, these appointments.
I would like to move to add the names, um, Jessica Dyzel, Cole Antle, Arthur Steele, and Samuel Blythe for full terms, and Ronald Pucci for partial term.
Thank you. Can we get a?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, the amended resolution has passed.
Nope.
And the amend, the, the amendment has passed. Thank you.
So 25R96 is amended, appointing members to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. Um, can someone move in second?
Second.
Do we please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R96 is, has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R97 by title only?
I promise those will be the last two weird ones, Tina. Appointing a member to the city's Environmental Sustainability Commission.
Okay, so we have to add the name to this one, too?
No, ma'am.
This one's good. All right. Fantastic. Is there a staff report? No. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Resolution 25R97 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R98 by title only?
Authorizing the transfer of unencumbered funds.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Greg?
Hi. Um, good evening, members of council. This piece of legislation transfers unencumbered funds within the operating fund to meet projected expenditures. Um, this transfer is to cover real estate tax expenses. It came in higher than what we had budgeted. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Cynthia?
Uh, what was the difference between what we thought and what it is?
Yeah, we needed to transfer about $28,000 to cover real estate taxes. It's hard to budget or know what for real estate taxes, because we don't really pay real estate taxes. However, for instance, when we purchase, um, right-of-way property, if we're enlarging a street or so forth, it might be taxable at that, at that time. So we have to pay taxes in the first year until it becomes non-taxable.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question? All right, thank you. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole? President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R98 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R99 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction contract with Clear Creek Coatings for the Orange Berry Road Water Tower Painting and Rehabilitation Project, CIPW-20, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Lenny?
Good evening, members of city council. So this is a construction contract for the painting and rehabilitation of the 1 million gallon water tower that's out near Homestead Metro Park. Uh, we put this project out to bid in October. We received nine bids. Um, so, uh, interestingly, the low bidder was more than half of our engineer's estimate, which was concerning to us, so we did a little bit of research. was concerning to us, so we did a little bit of research. Ultimately, that contractor withdrew their bid, which we accepted them and allowed them to withdraw their bid. The second lowest bidder was Clear Creek Coatings. Their bid was $1.657 million, which was about 27% under the engineer's estimate, and all the other bids were fairly close together. So we are recommending that this contract be awarded to Clear Creek Coatings in their bid amount plus approximately 10%, which results in the maximum not-to-exceed amount Happy to, oh, one other unique thing about this project is this is being funded through, because who knew that it costs this much money to paint a water tower? But it does. And so we had originally budgeted for this project in 2024, and when we started developing plans, realized that we had not even close enough to actually award a contract, so we rolled that money over to 2025. So the majority of the project will be funded through our 2025 capital budget plus the 2024 carryover. The balance will be, is included in the 2026 capital improvement budget that you authorized in November. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone on council have a question?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lenny. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Past 7-0.
Thank you. Resolution 25R-99 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R-100?
Authorizing the city manager to purchase fleet vehicles and equipment from Henderson Products, Inc., and FIDA Freightliner Columbus, Inc. through the state cooperative purchasing program.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second. Kyle?
Good evening, members of city council. Before you tonight is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a swap-load vehicle. This is a new, a new type of vehicle to public service. It operates much like our current two-and-a-half-ton trucks, but as the name might indicate, you can actually swap what's on the bed of the truck, so it allows it to do different functions for the city, such as carrying cargo, a flatbed option, a utility basket, salt, brine, and other functions. We're actually purchasing the vehicle from FIDA Freightliners of Columbus for $108,000, and then the swap-load from Henderson Products, Inc. for $185,000. So the total expenditure is $294,000. Initially, we had thought about leasing it, but have since decided to purchase it because we have the funds available, and those will come out, pardon me, of F3 and F4 for heavy equipment, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Kyle? No? Okay. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Past 7-0.
Resolution 25R-100 has passed and will be in effect, and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. This concludes the legislative portion of this meeting. President's communications, I just want to thank everyone for coming out for the tree lighting last night, there were hundreds. Does anybody know how many people were there?
A lot.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. There were a lot. It was really hard to find a place to park. Okay. And I want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season, and again, we all want to thank Mr. Carrier and Ms. Hale for their service to the community. Our next meeting will be January 12, 2026. Mr. Rowley, do you have any updates?
I had mentioned one item in an email to council, but just wanted to make sure that all of you are aware that we're anticipating a release of the draft Darby Accord update tomorrow. They sent communication today indicating that the webinar that was previously scheduled was canceled, but they're going to distribute those materials. I'm anticipating that they'll be asking for public comment through mid-January as part of that distribution from various stakeholders, obviously elected officials, and others in central Ohio.
So even with the postponement of the webinar, they're still thinking mid-January for everything?
Yeah, I think they'll have details about what that timeframe is gonna look like as part of the release tomorrow, but what I saw in an email today was that they were going to be inviting people to reach out to them directly if you'd like to have a conversation and hear that update, but there were some scheduling issues that people voiced about the timing of tomorrow's webinar.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, Dee, do you have any updates for us?
I want to remind residents that the city offices will be closed December 25 and 26, and also January 1. I want to wish a happy belated birthday to Ms. Vermillion, and a happy birthday to President Cottone, and I also want to thank Mr. Carrier and Ms. Hale for their service, and to the community, and it's been an honor and a privilege to be your clerk, so thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dee. Does council have any other items for discussion?
Do it.
You got nothing? All right, peace out, brother. All right, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting? Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. This meeting is adjourned. Two for Christ's sake, no, now you're going four.
Hey, you don't know what you're getting into, bud. You have no idea what's coming your way. You're gonna call me one day and go, what the? Because you are, I know you are.